Anyway, I see it's six thirty.
Okay.
So being that it's six thirty, uh, we'll call the public meeting for the only on planning board is scheduled for six thirty, so we'll call that meeting in order. Kathy, could you read the role, please?
Right, Faye, here. Jay Beatty.
Here.
Mark Sabella.
Here.
Reed McElroy.
Here.
Craig Paulson.
Here. Okay, um, I guess, uh, just to begin, um, we do have the, the applicant is the only NYMCA. It's for site plan number zero seven twenty-two at one eleven or eleven oh one Wayne Street. And this is for the, uh, outdoor, uh, was airnasium and, uh, and for the splash pad, right? Other activities, ice skating and all those stuff. And I guess, um, we could have you start off explaining the project, but I guess that would depend whether it's necessary, the planning board has heard your project. If, do we have any members of the public that are here interested?
If I could just read the legal notice.
Oh, yes, sir.
That's okay.
Please proceed, that's right.
Okay, um, I'll just read the legal notice, um, into the record. Legal notice, public hearing, City of Olean Planning Board, application of the Olean Y M C A at eleven oh one Wayne Street, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, six thirty P M, and at William Municipal Building Room one nineteen via Zoom Public Hearing and Meeting Link at cityofolyan.org forward slash planning board. Please take notice that in accordance with the provisions of section nine point one point six of the zoning law of the City of Olean, a public hearing will be held on the date and time specified above in connection with an application that has been filed and received by the planning board of the City of Olean for a preliminary site plan review and approval of a project at the above noted location. A copy of the preliminary site plan application is on file for inspection in the City Clerk's Office of the City of Olean, Frank Caputo, City Clerk, Kerry Kerper, Program Coordinator. Now we're legal.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So if you wanted to, is there anyone that'd like to make any questions or comments?
I just have a couple of questions.
Okay, can you please just say your name and address?
My name is Tom Scott, four oh nine North Ninth Street. Um, right now, we have the play, the existing playground in our backyard. And I don't know if there's anything from the new development going across the street. But a couple of questions that my wife and I have is, um, are you on public privacy fence? Cause from like our neighbors up to your parking lot, there's a six foot privacy fence that goes along the chain link fence. I need to know if that's gonna be installed, if there's gonna be any upgrade in the lighting and, um, security, and is it gonna be camera security? I mean, I mean, how active is the old playground gonna be?
Sure, so.
In, in the project?
So.
Hi. So.
If this is Ninth Street here. This is the current association office and the current play, or I'm sorry, the current parking.
Right.
And roughly here is the existing playground. We are proposing no changes whatsoever to any of this. Everything will be encased on this side of Tenth Street.
Okay.
So there'll be no additional lighting here that would obstruct your backyard. I would anticipate, but I can't say with certainty that this new playground, which will be in the center, will probably take the lion's share of people off of this playground, cause this one is about twenty-five years old.
Right.
And that's gonna be brand new. So my guess would be children, and certainly our programs at summer camp, the kids are gonna be here.
Okay.
Um, so I hope that answers your question.
Right, um, and it does involve privacy fence.
Yeah, and there's, yeah, again, there's no, there's, there's no proposal to do anything to this property. Fencing, lighting, security.
When we were here in December, um, the plan we looked at said there was gonna be a six foot privacy fence in your drawing that you brought that day.
That would be the perimeter fence around the actual project. So, so there, there will be fencing around the entire project, yes, but again, no, nothing affecting Ninth Street or this piece of the property.
Alright, so everything's gonna be as is, it is now.
Correct.
Okay.
Cameras and I think there's about security.
In the sense of not controlling.
In this area, no, but as far as the, the project, absolutely, there will be security cameras. There will be additional lighting for this piece of the property, but, but over here, nothing.
Okay, there's no lighting that you're installing over there. How is that gonna affect across the street into our backyards?
Ryan, do you wanna?
It, it really shouldn't. We, we'd have to meet certain requirements for light spill and everything. We submitted a light, uh, pollution plan and everything to the city to meet their requirements. So, um, yes, there's gonna be additional light, but we're, it, it literally is, it, you know, there's pollution barely to the road if that, so, um, and I don't have that printed here. I don't know if that, it's in the set.
Yeah.
If you wanna look more at it, um, they do have a plan that shows light levels in plan, how far it kind of wanders outside of, yeah.
Right, I, I made the turn was if there're gonna be more traffic in the old playground and the fencing, it took us two years to get part of the picket fence, uh, part of the chain link fence fixed. When the tree came down and took it down.
Right.
And like I said, we just thought that it was gonna be the continuation of that picket fence all the way up through to the, to reach.
Yeah, there's, there's no plan for additional fencing here. And my anticipation would be less use of the playground, for sure.
Okay.
It's hard to read on this, but this is kind of the light plan. But you can see like they, they give measures of what candles, you know, outside of me, so it's, it's zero. It's basically in the street here, so there's absolutely nothing more. You're gonna be able to see the light, but it's not gonna actually shed. Correct, yeah. Everything's down, focus down, nothing's up, so anything on this side isn't gonna be, you know, looking like it's glaring towards this direction or any direction.
What's good to be hours of operation?
That's a good question. It depends. There, there certainly will be morning activity in the airnasium. We, we, we anticipate having senior aerobics classes out there, pickleball out there. We do anticipate, because it gets dark so early in the evening in the winter, that we'll probably have some evening ice skating. It would not, the hours would not go outside of our current fly operation.
From the open from till ban clock.
Till nine, right. We're not talking like midnight or anything outside of those hours.
Alright.
What is, what is your opening time?
Five. It's five thirty, but I don't anticipate anyone being out there that early.
And I would imagine eight would probably be your earliest activity outdoors?
More than likely, yeah. There might be some seniors that wanna go out there and walk early, but.
I just pickleball at eight, at seven in the morning would be a little much for neighbors.
Yeah, I don't anticipate that either.
Yeah, okay. Uh, anyone else have any additional questions or comments?
Do you have a scaled down picture of that that I could take home a chance?
I do. We have this that we completed together. I'll give you my whole stack.
Okay.
I can record my own fire here.
I just wanna make sure you have every page. You're welcome.
That satisfied you with everything?
Yes.
Questions? Okay, thank you. Um, is there anyone additional? Comments, pro, against, questions? Okay, alright, um, I undertake a motion to, uh, close the public hearing.
Motion.
A motion made by Mary. Do I have a second? Second by Jay. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Oh, Mary. Public hearing is closed. With that, we will, uh, open the, uh, regular meeting of the planning board at six forty.
Thank you again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kathy, would you please call the role? I guess noting the role of the same, except that Jerry Steinert has joined us and did join us, note that in the record too, for the public hearing. Alright, um, the, let's see, reading and approval of the January ninth meeting minutes. Anything local, Katie, fruits?
Roll call?
Yep.
I think it's all members present, except. And except the four time bars.
Period, that word, key word is missing.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Reed. I missed that. Figure everything else up, okay to me. The motion to approve the minutes with that one change.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you, Reed. Uh, second?
Second.
Second by, uh, by Mark. Excuse me, all in favor of the minutes? Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. Okay, uh, old business, the Olean Y M C A. Let's see, we've, uh, let's see, seeker wise, if we still, that does still have to be re-reviewed, reviewed by zoning board, is that correct?
Yeah, um, based on my conversation with code enforcement from us relaying the information to them, advising that they needed to, um, put their negative declaration on the correct form. They also have some other work to do in their motions. They need to go back and, um, declare themselves lead agency prior to issuing that negative declaration and doing that on the correct form. So I have a meeting set for Wednesday with one of the zoning board members, so, um, I can relay that information. Kathy and I also did meet with, um, Code Enforcement Officer Reed and, uh, Jacob, their administrative assistant, to work on that and to, um, help them provide the correct forms to the board. So that will have to come out later, Dave.
Right, right. We can proceed with.
We can.
Without the.
Yes, and then I, I recall there were two other follow-up things. As you may recall, all the comments were satisfied, uh, with, uh, the DPW Division reviews. The Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan was submitted and it was indeed reviewed by our DPW Director. And he just had one suggestion, um, from that, um, slip. And he just wants to note for the, um, applicant in engineering firm, that these two trees may not be able to be planted due to the drainage that's underneath. So he's just requested and suggested that further review be done on those two and, um, you know, not have the trees be planted, if that's the case, um, you know, just to help you guys in the long run. And I believe the other, um, outstanding item was, um, you would explain to the board in greater detail, um, the design of the six foot fences.
Yeah, aluminum slat fencing was the part that was in question, and that's confirmed now.
Okay.
Do you have any guide as to what that'll look like?
So, so we're going with, so I was talking before, the original plans had like a real fancy fence. So when the project was originally developed, we go through design, further design and budgeting. We're going with just a six foot chain link fence, vinyl coated, uh, perimeter fence, so pretty standard as far as that. It's more just a, just a safety, just enclosure for safety and containing, you know, the kids and, you know, keep them.
They're not running into the road.
Correct, so, um, wanted to keep it pretty simple, you know, and without making an eyesore, but also didn't wanna go too far just for budget reasons.
Okay, so in this case, so it is gonna be a chain link?
Correct, yes. Yep.
Right, cause I think the, the impression I was having visually, um, was you were talking about something that would be, uh, more blocking view, you know?
Yeah.
Some people wouldn't be able to see it.
No.
Okay, so this'll be.
The full perimeter fence around the whole property is, is.
Will be standard, okay. Okay, so that's easy enough to, to picture.
Yes.
So when you say vinyl coated, what does that mean? Both be white or black?
Black, right now it's black, you know, so it's just the, all the chain link is just coated black.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it won't have the interlooping strands?
No, right now, we're not lining up the slats through the whole thing, correct.
Cause they do make those interlooping.
Yes.
Obscure.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, this wants to be somewhat of a public space. We don't, we're not like, what's going on behind the walls, you know, I understand that there is some privacy, but through development, you know, we want people to see what's going on and invite it, so that was kind of the, what we got to, just between that function, budget, so.
Could, if security becomes an issue down the road, with the way the world is now, could those slats be added later?
Yes, that's, that's added, slats are added to a standard chain link fence.
Okay.
Yep, they just kinda go down sliding from the top.
And that setback far enough that that would not be a problem for traffic, great, I believe.
Correct.
In terms of line of sight going around the corners and such. Pretty sure.
Yeah, code enforcement reviews that.
Change they could probably even talk better.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but if they, but if they have to make it opaque because of security issues.
The only, the only potential would be right at the corner of, uh, tenth, they're coming down. Once that first car approaches the intersection, they should be passed up by the sidewalk and ease their view, so.
But it's still, it's behind the sidewalk, correct. Okay. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did we have any other conditions at all, or were there anything you can remember?
Um, I think just your general, um,
Lighting, shielded and downward.
And like, like a lineup.
Right. Um, which I believe that's what they already got in their plans.
Yes.
But we can just add that as a typical, uh, condition.
Yep, and then, um, I mean, if you wanna condition that slip that they take that into consideration, or if you just wanna note it for the record.
Is that for the story?
Which one is that?
About those two trees and.
That they may, well, it was just noting they may not be, didn't know for certain, he, he wasn't saying for certain.
Right.
They couldn't use.
Once they're just.
So I would just say, unless I left the word. Yeah, you have to coordinate it.
Okay.
I, I don't think that, that's something that they're just gonna tell them that they can't prove.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, and we have that for the record, so. Um, I think that would be sufficient. I don't recall, um, any other items that were discussed for conditions at the previous meeting.
Okay, oh, and do I have a motion to approve, uh, the project, um, with the, uh, usual lighting condition? That it'd be night sky compliant, shielded downward, um, and, uh,
Yeah.
That would be the only condition. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion.
Motion made by Jerry, second by Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unopposed? Your project is approved.
Thank you so much.
Guys, you're good to go.
Very exciting.
I know, it's awesome.
We'll invite you all to the groundbreaking.
Okay.
March eighth.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We were pretty hopeful about tonight.
Yeah, that's great, um, and you can get all your permits, uh, tomorrow morning in code enforcement.
Awesome, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sure.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
You too.
Good night.
You too. Yeah. Good to see you, Allah. Thanks. Bye.
Okay. The only thing I can say is that the fencing, you know, with its brewery, we have that full solid fence in it, and it does help with public, uh, it does cut down on noise. And people like to feel like they're not in the eye of somebody else. Especially when you're kids, you never know what you could be on the other side of the fence like.
That's what I was just.
That is my thinking.
And I think those.
I. Yep.
It is a lot of footage to, from a budget standpoint, I understand that.
I think if it became a real issue in the future, they'll upgrade. They'll do something to upgrade it, maybe beyond just putting those slats in for a chain link. You know, if it becomes.
Well, I mean, cause it's, it's still a big noise. It, it does reduce, you can do something a little more silent.
Yeah, you are gonna get kids.
It might be tough to get the materials right now, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, but even those loops that go down would help a lot, because it would cut down, it would, you know, people couldn't just look in the fence without being right up there, they couldn't really see anything, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I would imagine that the people who will be most affected from a noise standpoint, um, would likely be, uh, across the street on Buffalo. Either in the, both in the apartment and then along, uh, between Tenth and Buffalo and Reed. And, uh, and then those people on the Tenth Street side over there, um, that same section between Buffalo and Reed. But I, I don't know, it's, I don't, hopefully it won't be too crazy, you know, and they may have to put it up. You know, if there are a lot of complaints, the YMCA wants to be a good neighbor.
Yeah, I think so.
If there are a lot of complaints, they'll try to do something, probably, uh, and given that area's potential of not wanting people to be looking in all the time, I mean, I, I get, you wanna be publicly seen, so that, hey, look, this is a good thing to come and do, but you also wanna avoid the creepy folks. So I guess, well, we'll see how she works out, hopefully, well, it should, it should go, um, new business.
Well, there's no new business at this time.
Okay. And we are.
I do have miscellaneous.
You do have miscellaneous, okay.
Sorry, um, as you may recall, last year, this city, we applied, uh, to the federal U S D O T for the RACE, um, project. It was, uh, twenty-five million dollars to redo Westgate Street. Uh, we were unsuccessful in our attempt. We are going to reapply. The applications are due February twenty-eighth, so I'm requesting, uh, the planning board support, um, for our support letter, and if you would be so inclined that we could have, Craig sign it on your behalf as acting chair.
I'd like to know what the plan is.
Yeah, absolutely. So we just had a public hearing last week on it.
Okay.
And we don't have it designed out, so it's just really us competing against the entire nation. But what our intent is, is to redo that two and a half mile corridor. So we are again partnering with St. Bonaventure University and the town of Allegheny, and it's really about connecting our communities. And it's about, um, trying to help our, some of our vulnerable populations that tend to be left behind. Some of our oats, transit riders, and connecting, you know, Henley and Washington, those, um, neighbors, like, and the residential areas into this, um, better and more transit stops. Perhaps like if there's enough funding to allow, um, E V charging stations throughout, uh, trailhead parklet at that national grid. Right away, the utility, right away.
Oh, and do it first.
There's, yes, and to have, um, chargers there, maybe it would end up being a scooter rental station. Some, some sort of bike lane, some green infrastructure to try to help alleviate, um, the water runoff into our storm system. I mean, removal of traffic lights for a better flow. It could be traversable, I mean, many roundabouts that you could drive over. There's no level of detail drawn to that degree. It's just concepts that, um, trying to get us to all connect, so.
Did you have anyone attend, like, when?
Yes, yes, I was.
Like, remember the people that were here, well, we came here materially, remember the people that were here talking about the traffic issues?
Yes.
Okay, so they came.
But none of the neighbors came to that.
Wow, surprise.
I know, I was disappointed. It was, um, we did a huge public outreach. Kathy actually sent the notice to every business owner on Westgate Street. We, um, put it to the media, the radio stations, the city's website. I mean, what did we have, like thirty-some people there?
Yeah, there were quite a few.
And it was really positive, and we did this exercise with people that had the two and a half mile corridor.
Sorry, what is this man about?
Oh, it's from, it's Westgate Street to Bonaventure, so it's the fourth corner right here, yeah.
So it's, you're talking about right here, this?
That roundabout.
To?
The, uh, St. Anna's Drive Line.
That's only two and a half miles, so it seems long.
No, it's two and a half.
I'll take that.
Yeah.
People usually just take three miles.
So it's gonna help that, that, what, what is it, you know, constitution?
Independent.
Independence.
Yeah.
Independent street and all that coming out of Burger King and, yeah, cause that's.
So it would look to replace traffic lights with roundabouts in?
I mean, I don't, we're just, no, we're not to that level of design, because then you would have to go into design. So we're just throwing out concepts to U S D O T. Um, and so we had this, this, these long maps, and so we had asked those in attendance, you know, do you have a concern? What is your concern? Like, what's one positive if, and what's one negative? And so it was nice, they actually wrote on the notes and then put the number on, so that way we can reference. So that way we can have ideas into the application for the concept of the design.
Why do you think it was denied?
What's that?
Why do you think the grant was denied?
The previous time? Oh my gosh, there's only, um, limited funds, and they awarded ninety the year before that, across the entire nation. Ninety projects got awarded. Half go to rural communities and half the funding goes to cities. There is just not enough money to go around, and so it's, like, our North Union Street grant was called the Tiger Grant. This is the same money, now it's called RAISE. So, I mean.
Called what?
Uh, RAISE.
RAISE.
R A I S E, rebuilding American infrastructure, yeah.
Sustainability.
Yeah, so it's just so competitive, um, and there's only one point five billion for the whole nation and the islands and. Yeah, and I think there were like, well, a hundred and fourteen in the last round awarded to the nationwide, so. Half being cities, half rural.
Competitive.
No, it just, yeah, and then there are more applications being submitted as well, so it's higher competition. But we were so close the time before last, um, like, we revamped our benefit cost analysis and, um, we had a good debrief the last couple of times, so we know that there's some weaknesses that we need to address. And one really being was that public engagement piece that, hey, it's our community, it's our project, and we really need to know what are their concerns? So we get, you know, really the right concept to bring it forward.
It'd be nice if they'd figure out something so kids can walk to school.
That's it, yeah, absolutely. We need the safe connections for the neighborhoods in.
Right, the middle school, the high school, Washington West.
Agree.
Yeah.
Walkability, bike ability, roll ability, that is one thing we kept saying we really need to make sure. I mean, we found, you know, some instances on North Union Street, we've learned techniques have advanced since then, and, um, so I think we'll have a better idea going forward. And then, you know, you go into design, that would take a couple of years, so, I mean, who knows what, what advance it beyond that.
Roundabouts.
Does that help?
I guess. What, what's your timeframe for your submitted, like, your recent?
February twenty-eighth is the due date. Yeah, and they just announced it, um, towards the end of December, so. Fast and furious process.
It's difficult.
And awards will, um, be made no later than the last week of June.
I'm just the month and count.
July.
So you were just, you, you were notified, how long ago did you print, we didn't get it?
Yeah, right?
Wait, how long ago was it you?
No, that was over the summer.
Okay.
So then they, it, they gave the no FO out. It's a notice of funding opportunity. That, then all of a sudden they said, hey, there's gonna be another round. That was done in December, and it's due February twenty.
Those not gonna be long term.
Not at all. And especially to have that public engagement and to get the message out.
So it's not, so, yeah, so it wasn't even a no FO?
No, it was a no FO, I know.
Yeah, see, so that's what they do, yeah. They get all these and, yeah, yeah, they just play this game.
The opportunity, yeah.
Cause it's just an opportunity to maybe get the money where, uh, where no FO is funds available.
Yes.
There's funds of, so there might not even be funds available for this, they're just finding out that there are projects available.
Yep. Yep.
Oh gee, yeah, so they play, yeah, that's. Yeah, well.
They're working.
You could have one point seven trillion dollars, they had a little bit more money, that's fine, but. Well, no, no, I'm saying, out of, out of the.
With a trillion, they just.
Build back better, or thing, whatever you wanna call it, uh, they'd have more for infrastructure. But, uh, yeah, that's, that'd be a great project, a great project. But, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of need out there.
Yeah.
Say there are a lot, awful lot of municipalities out there.
Yeah.
We've, we've been loaded up pretty well with grants, I'm sure, I imagine they look at that, too.
They do, yes, that's, um, to our advantage, really, and the Tiger.
I was thinking it'd be a disadvantage, because you've recently received a lot, other places have.
Oh, no. No, but we've successfully administered and done the project, so it, it helps get us points. Yeah, and especially us doing the Tiger, North Union Street, that helps a great deal. Because they know we can successfully invest our federal funds and go into construction and, um, partner it with state and local, so.
Yeah, cause that was really amazing even to be able to get that, I mean, I, I remember, I remember, and, cause I mean, that was almost like getting struck by lightning, you know, it was almost like.
I remember, I remember. It was, yeah, uh, cause all the money at that time was going to Chicago.
I love it with state funds, they started at first and then they got turned, and somebody.
We tried for everything.
Yeah, just tried for everything, and then I remember somebody saying, well, tiger funds will come out, why don't you try, but you know, again, it's this little pool of money.
And everyone said, oh, yeah, we put in the application, they said, you'll never get it, I mean, we tried a couple of times and got it, I, I remember being at home that evening going, oh, boy. Now what do we do?
Now that we got it.
Yeah, and now.
Yeah, so that was, that was nice, that was nice.
The nice news this year, we, I mean, every major project we threw last year was on that corridor.
Yes.
So.
Yes, and that's helped in our application, um, because of rewriting and updating, yes, it's been good, and then the housing is coming. So yes, that, well, is gonna be incorporated into the narrative.
The signage, what, what, what grant was that for, for the signs, like all the?
That was, um, ARPA funds, that was, uh, the boost business program.
That's nice.
Yeah, we just, um, allocated our last dollar today, that committee meeting this morning, so.
Okay, so then you, we need a, a motion to do that?
If you choose or just, if, uh, consensus.
To support the application and motion.
Sure, and then, okay, and then I have the letter here, the second.
Motion by Mary, second by, uh, Reeve, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And then we have Craig's name as acting chair, Tom Norman.
How's Tom?
I emailed him and he didn't email back, I'm, I'm sure, I don't have an update.
How are you?
Yeah, I'm sure. How's my knee?
The knee's intact, it's, uh, my hamstring and my M C L's strained. And then I've been, just got off a five-day prednisone regimen or six days, whatever it was, so, I feel pretty good, yeah.
Good.
That's it?
I, I didn't like it.
Uh, next meeting would be our regular meeting if there's business, right, so that's. Oh, February. Thirteenth.
Correct.
Okay. Alright, so if we're here, we're here, so, um, so that'd be February thirteenth at, uh, six-thirty, if we have business. Um, so otherwise, do they have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Time Mark, second by Jay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None of those, we're good, we're done, thank you, folks.
Thank you.